Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Walker.
Bowheads, Father God, I come to you humble today. I ask you for your guidance, for your wisdom in everything I do and all of us here at the County Commission do. Ask that you touch our hearts, that you make us better leaders, better people, and that so that we can serve our people. God, I ask that you want to come through Montgomery and heal every heart in Montgomery and bring us all together as one. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the roll. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
Present.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Vice Chairman Sankey.
Present.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum. We have a couple of proclamations. Yeah, this is First Responders Month, and most of the time I get the other commissioners to do proclamations or ask them to do the proclamations, but I'm gonna take the liberty of doing this one myself because, as all the commissioners are, this is very, very dear to my heart. First responders, these men and women that put their life on the line to go out and serve us, they're running into situations when I'm running out of situations. And they're there for us, they protect us, they put their own lives on the line, and their families. I just appreciate so much each one of you, but also your families who also don't know in the mornings, when you leave to go out to your job, whether or not you're gonna come home that day. My wife feels fairly certain that if I go to work in my private industry, that there's a good chance I'm gonna come back home that day. But a lot of times your families don't know that's gonna happen. So sincerely, we have a lot of first responders here today. I'm gonna go through each one of them and present a proclamation. We're gonna get a picture made with each one of you. As you come forward, I'll get the commissioners to come down. And we do have a lot of them, so we'll kind of run through them fast. But I'm not gonna read the entire proclamation, but I will read the, maybe the first and last line. Whereas responders, first responders include law enforcement officers, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, and emergency dispatchers courageously dedicate their lives to protecting the citizens of Montgomery County and responding swiftly in times of crisis. And there's a lot of whereas's. But the last line, now therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery County Commission does hereby proclaim October the 28th, 2024, as First Responders Day in Montgomery County, Alabama, and encourages all citizens to recognize and celebrate the vital role first responders play in our community and to extend their heartfelt appreciation to those brave men and women for their dedication and service. Presents this 15th day of October and is signed by all the commissioners. And I'm gonna ask Montgomery Fire if they would come forward first. Sheriff. Don't leave.
First loser at the fair.
Come on, Sheriff.
Doug, take the sticker off.
Alright, everybody, one, two, three. I'll get another one. Trying to get everybody in. One, two, three. Last one is almost missing. Alright, everybody.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you so much.
Aleah. We got them back from Aleah.
And I'll be visiting all my first responders and my sheriffs. I'll be bringing something sweet this month for you guys to enjoy.
Thank you. Special thank you to Aleah with the pass word. Y'all lead that charge. Thank y'all so much.
Alright, everybody, one, two, three.
Y'all got me going. We could live on the interstate line at eighty-five every day, so thank y'all.
Thank y'all so much. Down in the south.
I'm a little black, huh? I'm a little black car and road, I'm gonna be all this gray, mom. Thank you so much.
EMA. EMA. That's it. MPD, Chief and Sheriff today. Chief was, uh, Chief spent a lot of time at the fair and Miss Coleman was out there every night at the fair.
Alright, I'm gonna get, get Sheriff Miss Coleman.
Like Aleah and the MPD, Sheriff's Department, and all law enforcement working together on the compression, crime suppression, thank y'all for what you do. We really appreciate it. So excited about what's going on with MPD and your leadership, so thank y'all. Don't leave that couple. Got one more, then I'm gonna take a big picture. What was what? Suppressing, not compressing.
You know what you meant.
Y'all know what I mean. The volunteer fire department. Hey, John, I'm glad you're here. We got head man.
Alright, everybody. One, two, three.
Yeah, last one, get, uh, get the, don't lose him. And Hanny Dambly, Hanny Sheriff's? Yeah. And Hanny Dambly was at the fair start to finish. I don't think we have a couple of small instances, nothing. They were there every day for us. Now we're gonna figure out how to get all of these together. All the shorter ones get in the front. All the tall ones get in the back.
Alright, I need everybody to scoot this way, all the first responders to be able to scoot this way.
You got to turn sideways like a beauty.
Alright, one, two, three. Alright, one more. Alright. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all so much. He Rose.
We're gonna let them scoot out and get back to work taking care of us. Alright, our next presentation, as we know it is October, which means it is cancer, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I always get the privilege of making this presentation. And just for a fun note, we're in 2024, so that means 2014 was the year I joined the County Commission and the year I was diagnosed with stage three breast cancer. So 10 years later, and we are wrapping things up. But there are organizations in Montgomery County that without whom women like me and men like me would suffer terribly without the support that these organizations give. And as y'all know, any of you who work with nonprofits like we do all the time, it is nonstop. You can't take your foot off the gas for one second, raising money, raising awareness. But we are very fortunate in Montgomery to have these three groups. And the first one is Joy to Life, and I saw Joy. Would you please come down?
Have you enjoyed the life, too?
Yeah, if you have.
She was, uh, bothered by the fact that nobody clapped for any of the first responders. And I'll joke, she had probably saved nearly as many lives as the first responders.
No, that's good.
And the way she clapped for her, and I'd say it's hilarious.
No, absolutely. I'm gonna call everybody down. So Joy to Life, we've got the Cancer Wellness Foundation is represented. And was anybody able to join us from Women of Hope? Women of Hope, okay. So I wanted these two ladies to be down here while I read the resolution, the proclamation. And this is Carol Gunter with the Cancer Wellness Foundation, and Joy Blonde Time with Joy to Life. Whereas breast cancer remains one of the most common and deadly cancers among women with over 260,000 new cases diagnosed every year. Both women and men are affected. Whereas increased public awareness and education on risk factors and exams are critical in saving lives. Whereas Montgomery County recognizes the efforts of these organizations. During October, special events, awareness campaigns, fundraising walks, health initiatives, provide opportunities for residents to get involved. Whereas it is essential to honor the resilience and courage of breast cancer survivors and remember those who lost their battle. The Montgomery County Commission remains committed to supporting healthcare policies that improve access to cancer screenings, prevention, treatment for all residents. Therefore, the Montgomery County Commission does hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Montgomery County, Alabama. And we encourage all citizens to, you know, acknowledge the, um, the awareness. That's great, but get your exams, y'all. I mean, early detection of breast cancer is the answer. I mean, if you can get in there and you're at stage one or stage zero, the, the, um, medical care has gotten so advanced, you are going to be fine. Don't be scared to get your screenings, not just for breast cancer, but for everything. Don't make me name it all, but you know what it, you know what it all is. So I would like to take this opportunity, anyone in the audience who has had breast cancer, would you mind, if you wouldn't mind, raising your hand or standing up? Anybody in here in the club? That's amazing. That's amazing. Because I say it every year in October, by this time next year, somebody in this room will be diagnosed. Or your mom, or your sister, or your daughter will be diagnosed, somebody you are very close to. And every year I get blindsided. And this year, one of my closest friends in the world was diagnosed with triple negative breast cancer at forty-two years old, the same age I was when I was diagnosed. So it happens, but again, thanks to efforts from these organizations, we are doing better treating cancer. So thank you, ladies, so much for being here.
Thank you.
Carol Gunter, and Joy. And I'll hold on this for Women of Hope, and we'll come over here and get a picture.
And I do wear my pink shoes for, um, for, yes. Yeah, you gotta get my pink shoes in the shop.
We have a large group that's done the public sign-in sheet, so I'm gonna remind, as Diane Anderson comes down for the Lacy Boyd Parade, I'm gonna remind all that three minutes, you're here to budget go off, so I'm gonna be a little stricter today on keeping it under three minutes. So Diane Anderson, Lacy Boyd. Get, is that mic on?
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Deion Anderson. I'm bringing you greetings on behalf of the Lacy Boyd New Year's Day Parade. On January the first of 2025, we would be blessed to celebrate 20 years for the Lacy Boyd New Year's Day Parade. And we would not have made it this far without the support of our Montgomery County Commission. So I'm coming back to you on behalf of Mr. William Boyd for the Lacy Boyd New Year's Day Parade. Last year, you guys were very, very generous to us, and we need your help once more. This year, we're honoring Mr. Roscoe Miller, Killer Dilla Roscoe Miller. He would be our Grand Marshal this year from ninety-four point one FM. He would be our Grand Marshal for the Lacy Boyd New Year's Day Parade. And each year, this parade fosters a sense of community, a sense of togetherness, unity, and we strive our best to present a diverse parade to our community. This is actually the only New Year's Day parade in the state of Alabama. And each year, it's, it just keeps getting bigger, 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 and bigger thanks to the community and our Montgomery County Commission. Last year, it is my understanding from Mr. Boyd that you all gave us about 20,000. And since we have so many expenses as far as artists, for the first time this year, we're gonna have a big Southern Soul concert after the parade, free of charge for the entire community. And the response has just been super overwhelming. So the expenses, of course, they are getting bigger. So we're asking if, um, I think he told me you all gave us, again, 20,000 last year, but he's asking for each commissioner if you could please give us $5,000 so we can help as far as our security, our payroll, advertisement, and to pay the staff. So he would really appreciate if you all could kind of step up a little bit more to help us out so we can reach our goal.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
It seemed like, like in January, you had come to us and there was gonna be a Grand Marshal from New York City or something, and some of us gave money to bring that person. Has that changed?
Yeah, what hap, well, thank you so much, Commissioner Singleton. What happened, he was, he actually could not come, unfortunately. So we had to end up having another Grand Marshals. And what we were deciding to do is to have maybe a big, you know, concert after the fact. Mm-hmm. But unfortunately, we were really sad about that. He could not come.
Any other questions?
You know, Mr. Boyd can always count on me, so I will, you know, always give him what I've given in the previous.
And we thank you so very much, Commissioner. We really do. Thank you, Commissioner Ziegler.
Well, thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, and he's asking, if possible, if you all could please kindly give us a donation a little early because he has a lot he's trying to get done, if possible.
Okay, we'll take it under consideration.
Alright, we appreciate you all so much. Thank you.
Marie Singleton? Marie is no kin to Doug, right? For disclosure, tell them that.
You don't want to be, Doug.
They don't think I got the family coming up here.
No, you don't want that kin. You can take that cousin away. Take that cousin lying out.
Thank you for the icebreaker. I am Marie Singleton with Beyond the Wall Ministry. I came to present to you all today Operation Hands for the Homeless. I have in this bag everything that a homeless person should need to survive during the winter months. What we're here today is to present you all with a backpack. It within, within the, mm-hmm, within the backpack, you will find a sleeping tent. You will find, um, a sleeping bag on the side. You will find a cap, socks, everything, another emergency blanket, anything that they need to try to keep warm during the winter months. We also will be providing them with food once a week, as much as we can do. Right now, I have seven bags ready to pass out. Over the summer, I did water Gatorade. I would give out a cold water and a frozen water because, and what we do, what separates us from every other organization is that we are boots on the ground, where I use my own vehicle, my own finances right now. And I go out and any person that I see on the side of the road, I try to have some kind of token, a trinket, to give to them. Back here, at the beginning of the summer, they had a little community over by the old Kmart, where the U-Haul place is now, and they would be set up in that field and tent. And I would just go by, and they recognized the car, and they would start coming out, and I would just pass out whatever I could get my hands on for the day. So right now, with the winter months coming, they're not there on, the people that I was serving at that location, they were forced to move to a new location. So now they're kind of scattered out all over Montgomery. And so what it is that we're trying to do is that we drive around wherever we see that need. We try to give them something because we know that the, the weather is already changing. It's getting cool nights, cool mornings, and they're out there in open places without any help. And so, did you pass the, um, background? You just showed it to them. If you want to take a look at it, the bag is a secure bag, it's kind of heavy. The products that we are giving out are what I choose to give out for the following months. This is what my money can afford, and it takes about seventy-five to eighty dollars per person to put this package together, which I think that's really cheap when you're talking about someone's livelihood.
I'm gonna, is there questions the commissioners may have? Ms. Singleton, I do have one question. The, through the ARPA funding, we had allocated a lot of money to the MAPS Center, which is kind of doing a homeless, have y'all been in touch with Ken Austin and that group? Have y'all worked with them at all?
Okay, most of you don't need, but my name is Felicia Taylor, and I met Marie because I work downtown on Commerce Street, and I see her daily. I come in contact with those people. I actually called the MAPS Center a couple of weeks ago. We have one living in our stairwell that's been there a while. Unfortunately, I did not get a call back, so I called another one, did not get a call back. So I ended up calling the Police Department on the campus of Alabama State University. Because we are a revenue generating division, we had to have them move so that the people that come into our building would not be, you know, concerned. And so, again, I've seen what she's been doing, and she's been doing it out of the goodness of her heart. Everybody's not called to do this type of ministry work. It's a ministry. At the end of the day, that's what it is. And I'm with Marie 100% on whatever she's doing. And I share it with her because she does have a nonprofit now. She has all of her paperwork, everything in order, that it would only be fitting to ask for that help. Now, she's done seven bags, and when we think of the number seven, that's complete. So with that being complete on everything that she's done, I would love, love to see some assistance. We know what's going on in this city. We all see it. They are all over the place. And she's going around this city, this county, and making sure that Hands on the Homeless is coming from a pure place, which is her heart.
I, I don't think there's, hang on a second, wait. I don't think there's any doubt that you have a wonderful ministry, and you're obviously doing it for all the right reasons and the heart. We're just trying to make sure we consolidate all the homelessness.
Understand.
One of the goals that the commission has had is to make sure we're all on the same, and because everybody's doing great work. There's nobody.
Absolutely.
Uh, if you can hang around till our meeting's over, probably another fifteen, twenty minutes, I will make sure Ken Austin talks.
And Chairman, you remember Community, Central Alabama Community Foundation still has grants available. They have grant funding available.
If you got the ride hard and you're out doing it, we just get you, we need to get you the support group that you need to have. And I'm sorry that you, you didn't get a call back, but I promise you, we'll get in touch with Ken today, so. But we gotta move on. Wait, is there something that's?
I just wanted to stay about, we're going back to the MAPS Center thing. The MAPS Center closes at five o'clock. They don't run nighttime operations or anything. That's why we're still running the warming center. The MAPS Center would first be created to take those obligations away from us, if anybody's shooting doing that.
We're gonna address that.
They close, so.
Yeah.
I'm not supporting or not supporting anybody. I just want to make it clear.
Well, I'm glad you did, because I wasn't aware of that.
Matt, they're, they're not set, the old WSFA, yeah, they're not set up for overnight. Because of fire code, fire code.
And then one more thing that I want to add, a lot of the homeless people don't have transportation. So with the MAPS Center and some of the other places, you have to have a way to get there. And then a lot of the, and, and let's face it, a lot of people are homeless because they want to be by themselves. They don't want to have any contact. What my mission is, I am not here to solve the homeless problem. And we do realize it is a homeless problem. What I am, what I'm trying to do is serve as an aid because we put so much emphasis on our animals and other things, and as humans as well, no matter how they got to that condition, they're there now. And to see them out and so. And to see them out in such desolate places without any help or any support, that really tugs my heartstrings.
But we're gonna try to get you set up a meeting. As a matter of fact, before you leave, see me, I'll get you with Ms. Regina. We're gonna try to get you a meeting in the hub so that you can get, because I think Beacon Center has, they pick up home, they do that. So we'll, we'll get you with everybody so we can all work together and make sure that what you're doing is working with them.
And that was like with the offering money, city and county, we both partnered to offer to give $2 million. So there's a pretty good commitment. We just need to make sure we're all working together. But if you'll hang around, after the meeting, we'll definitely get on that.
Ms. Chairman, I know, I know whatever, just one question. What's the average cost of one of those bags?
The average cost right now is between 75 and 80 dollars per person.
All right, okay. We'll see. I'll see what I can do.
All right, Mark Shaw.
Thank you.
Did you look at the backpack? There it is, a little heavy. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw, if you would just state your name and if you would for us.
It's Mark Shaw. And, all right, what I come before y'all today about is situation we got. Crossing my business, my business located on, at 3295 Wheatonka Highway, Shaw's Garden Center and landscaping. And across the road from us, we've got Range 231. Here in the past couple of months and everything, and all the past four or five months, it seems like the situation across the road from us is getting worse. You know, two weeks ago, we had a shooting out there where a gentleman died or a person died. Before that, we have, we know of three wrecks that's happened on 231 because of the racing that they get to doing on Friday and Saturday nights. And those, you know, if you go back and you look, those accidents was from people that comes out of that bar and gets out there and, you know, has disregard for others. You know, my business was hit nine times by bullets. I've been broken into 27 times out there. The only thing I'm asking is, as y'all as a county commission, if we could get somebody out there on Friday nights and Saturday nights to sort of curtail what's going on. I mean, they're parking on my side of the road, which I know that's the right away, but still, they're having to walk across 231, which is five lanes of traffic. And then secondly, if they, which like two weeks ago, one of them got drunk or two, a couple of them got drunk. And they got their car off back over the hill. Well, instead of calling for a wrecker, they drove all over my property, drove across, rode across ties, tore up stuff, hit things, trying to jump the ditches to get back out. And, you know, this day in time, when a small business, the struggles that we have and everything and all, trying to keep our doors open, this, it's just getting to the point to where we just can't keep eating stuff. And so if y'all can, as a county commission, could help us out, I don't know, you know, what y'all can do. Some of the other establishments is going to the city meeting tonight. But the thing is, we're located in the county. We're at 3295 Wheatonka Highway. We have to pay that two and a half or whatever it is, two and a quarter inch city sales tax. We have to charge for it and everything. We have to pay it. But we, out of 27 times that I've had to call the law out there, we've never had Wheaton, I mean, Montgomery City to show up. It's always the county. Anytime.
Is that in the PJ?
It's in the PJ.
It's in the PJ, but we don't get any city benefits.
Yeah, that's, that's been a topic for a long time, being in the PJ is.
Well, the way that I look at it, and, you know, I may be ignorant, I don't know, I'm a simple man, but to me, it's taxation without representation.
That's what Mr. Doze used to tell me all the time.
And, you know, right now, that's what we're getting every time that we call the city. Well, when we dial 911 out there, it goes to the county. It doesn't go to the city. Anytime we have a fire or a medical emergency, we have to get, wait on first responders instead of getting the city out there. I don't mind paying the tax. I don't. But the thing is, I'm not getting any support from the city out of it. Am I going to the city meeting tonight? Yeah, I'm gonna voice my concerns down there. But I need y'all's help out there at the range. I mean, you know, when you get to the point to where there, you know, it's two weekends in a row we've had gunfire out there. This past weekend wasn't so bad, but I think the Sheriff's Department was out there a little bit last weekend. It wasn't quite as bad. At least my cameras didn't pick up any gunshots or whatever. But, you know, I don't know what y'all can do to help me, but, you know, I'm here with my hat in my hand asking you.
Ms. Shaw, thank you for coming. You and I had at least a couple of conversations on the phone and so forth.
Right.
I came to see you on Friday, but of course, you had to tend to your father. It seems like it's getting a little worse because for the past two or three years, it's just been the loud music, two or three o'clock in the morning. I was not aware until you told me that there had been gunfire and someone had actually lost their life. And I'm not too sure about just how it, the situation is, how we address it since it's been a police jurisdiction. Sheriff Cunningham, I was curious, has, is there anything we could do as a county to help police that area, anything at all? And I know you've probably gotten calls over the past two or three years as well. I know the loud music was a problem two or three years ago. I was not aware of the gunfire nor of anyone losing their life out there. So is anything that you can report to us on calls maybe you've been getting or any patrol in the area, please? Thank you, sir.
And it absolutely is taxation without representation. I would have a full-on come apart if they're charging me city taxes and not providing me city services. That's not okay.
And Amber Heller is here too.
Right, she's with, she's with me.
Just briefly.
I was just gonna speak a little bit. I'm Amber Heller. I'm actually Mark's daughter. I was just gonna let y'all the shooting that the gentleman did lose his life.
Your own on this, and I'm hoping the city will address it tonight, and I think they will, to be honest with you.
But if we don't come down here and stir the pot and get the talk started, then then nothing's gonna happen.
And that's what I'm saying, the talk should be started with.
Well, we're gonna be there tonight.
Their meeting is later than y'all, so we started here.
And like I said, once you deal with them, because I think they, they have it on their agenda, because I saw on the news this morning, but they were discussing some issues out there, so.
I think they've had enough issues out there that there's time to quit discussing it, to be honest with you.
Well, I talked to them. I called the city council person that night.
So I think we're gonna be okay. So go to the city council meeting.
Well, we're gonna be there tonight. Like I said, we just wanted to come down here. We didn't want y'all to be blindsided. We wanted y'all to understand what was going on and that, you know, we already know of one business that has left that area.
They closed today.
They're closing their doors today, the wood, the woodwork in place down there.
Lonely.
Yeah.
Lonely. They're closing today, and they're moving out.
Yeah, Vice Chairman Stank is well aware of it. He's been on top of it.
Yes. Yes, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for, thank you for coming, sir, and you and your dog.
Like I said, we're not here to complain or fuss. We're here just to try to, you know, let y'all know what's going on.
Well, thank y'all so much.
Hey, we are the complaint department, so you're right to come and talk to us. But, yeah, and you can certainly let the city know you have my full support and the nonsense that's going on out there. The city needs to do something, and we're not passing the buck.
Yeah, I mean, because on Saturday mornings, I mean, on Sunday mornings, typically it's me and my dad going down.
No, we, we get it. You're good. We got, we got, we got to move on. But you did the right thing to come and talk to us, and we support you at the city.
Levi Gilliard.